Thank you. Do we have any citizen requests to speak?
Okay.
Anybody want a chance to speak? A citizen's a chance to speak because we're all checking the crowd.
Giving everyone the last check. Alright, very good. Then we'll move on to our reports. First up, Tara, you have something from High School Peer Helpers.
Sure do. Megan Doherty and Katie Francis are here and they are going to share with you about Peer Helpers.
So we're here as Hudson High School Peer Helpers. We're primarily comprised of about thirty students. We wanted to deliver how much of an impact that we have within the school and the community and how dedicated and how wonderful this group is within the school.
Okay, my name is Emily Olson. I'm a senior at the high school this year. I'm going to kind of explain who we are as a group. So as Peer Helpers, we kind of form a group of students that are used as student leaders. So other students who are in need of help can come talk.
Excuse me, Emily. We're being told that the microphone isn't working so well. Can you guys go over to that microphone over on the table there and make sure the button is up? And if you don't mind sitting while you're talking, sorry for the opposite.
Get it right up in front of you.
Yep. Okay, let's try it again.
Is it working?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay.
So, so my name's Emily. I'm a senior this year at the high school. I've been in this group for four years now. So as a group, we kind of, we come together our freshman year as we are elected by our class and then we will like be a resource for students who don't feel comfortable going to a teacher or a counselor. We are confidential, so we cannot discuss anything that like students share with us unless it is going to harm them or somebody else. So each year we have about eight students join. Some years we have like more or less depending on the number of applicant applicants. In the recent years, we've had a large number of applicants and so like multiple students have been wanting to join this group and be a part of helping in the school community. So normally to talk with a peer helper, you like come down to the counseling office. You can set up an appointment with them or we put out like our emails, like our school emails, or if somebody just goes to the counseling office, they can be like, hey, I want to request to talk with a peer helper and we'll get pulled out of like a study hall if we have it that hour. Some of the things that we do within the school, so we obviously are resources, but then we also do staff breakfasts for students, for teachers in the mornings. We do, we did one last year and this year we're hoping to do one per semester. We like provide donuts, bagels, coffee, anything like teachers would want or need in the morning to kind of get their day started and provide like morale throughout the teachers, hope they have a good day, especially around like conference time when things get really stressful. Yeah.
Hi, my name is Maddie and I'll be a junior this year. And so basically we have meetings once a month and we have different trainings to talk about different current events that are going on or current topics that are being like come up and being concerned to us. So one of our important topics is cybersecurity and cyberbullying and we actually have our school officer come in and talk to us about that. Different listening skills and then self-care because a lot of times the self-care can take it or we don't really do it as much because we're helping so many other people. So it's important that we do it ourselves. Grief and loss, we have talked to Anna Johnson from the Butterfly Path the past two years. Different sexual assault and awareness trainings, how to maintain positive relationships with partners and significant others. That one's a really big topic that comes up, especially with like boyfriend-girlfriend relationships or either parent-sibling relationships. And then our, one of our alcohol and drug counselors, Sally Purno, she comes and talks about alcohol and drugs and suicide and mental health.
My name's Sam. Going to be a senior this year. And for information for formal sessions, we usually talk face-to-face and with peers that request to meet us and they can last anywhere from five to thirty minutes. Then informal, they're usually over digital communication, texting and calls and stuff, and they can last anywhere from fifteen minutes to an hour. And then on average, Peer Helpers report a session, formal, informal, and they last about thirty minutes on average.
Hi, my name is Piper Jensen. I'm going to be a junior. So for data we've collected over the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, we've documented about eighty-four point five hours of using our skills that we've learned through trainings to help our peers. So our three biggest topics, we have our relationships with a partner, girlfriend or boyfriend with about forty-two percent, relationships with your friends or family about thirty-seven percent, and then stress levels in students about thirty-four percent. And then on our next slide, we have a pie chart kind of breaking down everything into sections so that you can see what we talk about most of students.
My name is Abby Hughes. I'm an incoming senior peer helper and on the screen we have some student testimonials. So these are statements sent in by Peer Helpers that just kind of highlight the impact that this group has had. A lot being just all the skills they've learned throughout all of our trainings and how useful these skills are to just be good student leaders and help the school and our students because we all go through different things and have different struggles. So and just the relationships that we've built within our group. Yeah.
Hey, hi, everyone. I'm Katie Francis. I'm a counselor at the high school and a co-advisor with Megan Doherty. And we just wanted you all to be aware of this group. We tried to kind of advertise throughout the high school, but we want the community to be aware as well of the resources available to our students. And mainly we wanted you to hear how awesome these kids are, the kids that are in Hudson are. They work really hard. They work hard to make the school feel a little bit smaller for people, to provide those connections. And they dedicate a lot of their time, as you can see. Those hours are spent making connections, supporting, and then referring when needed. So we just hope that you'll utilize this information to share with those you feel might need it throughout the year. Thank you.
Great. Anybody have questions on the board? Molly?
I always have a comment. This is kind of stuff that we just love. Thank you, all of you, everybody in Peer Helpers and your advisors for doing all this hard work. I know it's gotta be not easy sometimes, but just know that I, you are making an impact on kids and I am so impressed with young people. They're fantastic. So when people say things, you know, they're sort of negative about young people, I think, oh, they're wonderful. They're just wonderful kids and I'm so proud of all of you. So thank you for what you're doing.
Right. Anyone else? Well, I know from yeah, I know some of you, I met Emily in her capacity at Youth Action Hudson, but many of you are involved in lots of things at school. So I think that helps, you know, relate to other students. And I'm sure there's going to be some students who want to talk to peers rather than adults about stuff that's going on, especially relationships. So thank you for all the work that you do. Appreciate it. All right. Next up, we have Andrea with an enrollment update.
Okay, so this document is updated as of, I think, an hour ago. This time of year, as you can imagine, there's quite a few modifications on a day-to-day basis. And so this document compared to even a month ago, there's a, I think, about another fifteen, almost twenty kids in our numbers for elementary purposes. And you can see that there's a few areas of red that we're watching closely. At the same time, this, the, other than the one area of red at Willow, that's been right around twenty-two, now it's jumped up a couple more kids. The others are new areas where we're above class size guidelines. And so we're continuing to monitor those. It's just been changing a lot over the last few days, for sure. Middle school, high school on the second page as well. You can see that the high school is up quite a bit from what the June twenty-twenty-three report was. And my understanding of that is that it's kind of a leg in the data. And Mike being here can always correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is it's there, they, that we have more entrants in, but not all of the people having requested the withdrawal for paper, paperwork purposes. And so they aren't yet processed. So we're not really expecting the seventeen forty-eight to come to fruition. It's just more a moment in time given our different systems at play. So we'll continue to update this, I'm sure, at the next board meeting.
Megan, do you have a question?
Yeah. I was just wondering what the, how far we're up or down compared to last school year with the current numbers. Estimate fine.
Um, one second and I have that. I think we're down about a hundred kids.
Probably down another hundred kids this year. K-12, elementary, I think we were about twenty-seventy-five and now we're sitting about twenty-twenty-eight. So we're down about fifty at the elementary.
Yep.
Middle school, I think it's pretty close to even.
Yes.
High school's down and we'll probably be down more once all the exits come through. So we're anticipating about a hundred students. And I think when we build the budget projections, Bonnie, if we take off a hundred kids, is that what we built in our?
And I did pull up the May twenty-twenty-three last enrollment update for elementary was twenty-seventy-six. So yep, it was about those fifty kids.
Thank you.
Yeah, Heather?
Hey, Andrea, can you just, if someone was looking and wondering, explain what, what the factors would be that would contribute? Like as an example, looking at North Hudson where we have forty-five kids in first grade with two sections, forty-five kids in third grade with three sections, you know, why it would seem to be inconsistent when you're looking across some of those breaks?
For sure, because a lot of this has happened in the last couple of weeks. It's not a steady number and with those numbers being as low as they are with the forty-three versus forty-five versus forty-six, a couple move in and a couple move ins and a couple move outs can really swing those numbers. And so this is just, and it shows in the far right-hand column, it's just updated as of right now. Tomorrow it will be different. And so we have been closely monitoring it. And again, other than that first grade at Willow, the others hadn't been read up to this moment. And so they just turned red. Already been having conversations with some elementary principals about what to do with the conversations. It's just hard this time of year because hiring mid-August and the impacts on those families in terms of they've likely have already received letters from their teachers welcoming them because we did class placements. And so to upset all of that, like we did last year, I mean, certainly we'll continue to monitor the numbers. And if it necessitates adding, then we will have that conversation. Last year, we did kind of the hybrid model where we added a teacher, but it was just more of a push-in support, third grade at Rivercrest, and worked pretty well. It's just hard. We want to always consider family impact, student impact, as well as staff impact with these numbers as they've been changing. I think Shannon at North Hudson said there was several changes just in the last four days. And that makes it tough when the numbers are so tight.
Thank you.
Any other questions on enrollment? All right, very good. Moving on then to the insurance claim from storm damage. I guess we're going to just have to institute this as a typical late summer, early fall.
I feel like it, yeah.
Agenda item. But Bonnie, this is you.
Sure. So on July twenty-fourth, we did have another storm with some hail damage to our buildings. We are working with Liberty Mutual and their claim adjusters to get those all processed, but we wanted to give you a summary of kind of what happened blow-by-blow. I don't think I need to go through it all, but it's there for your review. I think we're in a good place to start school. We have no delays, but definitely have some work to do on our buildings.
All right. So obviously, it's an evolving situation and we'll be getting updates as we learn more. But Kate?
I just was curious. I saw a lot of the roof leaking and I'm assuming that was in areas that they were not repaired.
Yep.
From the last storm.
Yeah. And actually, again, last, when was the storm? Friday night? Was it Friday night that it rained so hard here? Friday, Friday night. We have some more damage. So we're not sure if that's going to start another claim or if they'll just band-aid it onto this one. So.
Okay.
Well, Willow's whole roof was replaced. So it's a brand-new roof that's, that took hits from the.
Yeah, I think the issue at Willow was that it ripped off the.
The airhead.
Yeah. And then the water came in, which is right above the library, which then dropped the ceiling. So.
It didn't, however, damage the airhead of the chiller.
Yeah. Unfortunately, we tried to move it. Yeah, it could. Give it twenty minutes. But we'll keep you updated, but just wanted to give you a summary of where we're at right now.
All right. Any further questions on the insurance claim update? Otherwise, we'll move on to back-to-school update and that's Nick.
Yeah, just wanted to kind of remind you guys, and you've seen this, you saw this back in July. So we have new teachers starting this week on Friday. The new teacher orientation starts at the high school. We do have.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. Just a reminder that new teacher orientation starts this week on Friday. So that'll be at the high school. There's a new teacher orientation luncheon that's put on in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce. I believe board members that are attending have already RSVP'd. Tim, and so we have that set up and ready to go. Couple other dates to kind of hit on, all staff report back on Wednesday of next week. And with our all-staff kind of get-together kickoff district-wide meeting starts on Friday. That's going to be on Friday at the high school with the wellness walk, district-wide wellness walk at the high school in Raider Stadium at eleven, followed by lunch. And then we have the welcome-back addresses with, with different folks. The board members are welcome to attend those different events on Friday afternoon and here or all of them, whatever you'd like to do. A couple other things just to kind of put in your or on your radar is the first day of school is going to be on Tuesday, the twenty-ninth. So we have that going on. And then on September fourteenth is the back-to-school barbecue for staff. And so that will be a combination of soccer and volleyball that we have our back-to-school barbecue day. We've been doing that, I would say, probably seven years, eight years, we've been doing that. It's well-received. Staff members can come with their families. And that is September fourteenth. It's a Thursday night. So just if you want to put it on your calendar, you're welcome to, welcome to attend that as well. So just some interesting things coming on. Our speaker for this year for staff is a gentleman we brought in to talk with students this spring, actually, for our mental health, mental health week. And so he was well-received by our kids and he has a great message to staff about stepping into it as far as and difficult conversations and things along those lines. And so I think that'll be a great message for everybody here to kind of start back with the year. So any questions about back to school? Anyone? All right. Very good. Thanks for that report. Next up, we go to our action agenda. And first up is the consent agenda. Is there a motion with expenditures?
Mr. President?
Okay.
I'd like to pull the Hudson LEED Administrator contract from the consent agenda for discussion.
Okay.
For the purpose of transparency.
Great. So that will be pulled and then that leaves the remainder of the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the consent items that the Chief Financial and Operations Officer be authorized to pay bills in the amount of one million, five hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred, one dollars and five cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. There's no debate. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. All right. Next up is the Hudson LEED, which was determined by the board to be recommended for a four percent increase. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the four percent increase.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Mr. President, the only reason I pulled it just is from a transparency standpoint. You know, we had an operational referendum that came up. We likely will be going back to our voters, certainly justified, but I think it makes sense to share with the public our justification around the four percent so that we continue to be transparent and earn the trust of our public.
Okay. Is there any, any other comments or questions about that, about the recommendation? Because I think it was at the last meeting that we approved the negotiations with certified staff, which that's going up, whatever it is, four point five and a fraction or something.
Mr. President?
Four and a half, four point six. Yes.
Given Rob bringing this up, I would just say that we, as a board, discussed it and went with the four percent for the, the LEED administrators, given that that was the decision for teachers making over sixty-five thousand. And thus, it was the same for administrators. So we just followed the same rule for everyone making over sixty-five thousand. I think that was the cut number. Maybe I got it wrong, Bonnie?
No, I was right.
Okay.
All right. Any further comments or questions about that? In all favor, the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it.
Nay.
The motion passes. Right. Next up, we have budget update. Bonnie?
So just want to, we're continuing to work on the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. A lot of this information we have reviewed at previous meetings. The, we, there's kind of three big things that we're waiting for. Obviously, that'll set our budget. The third Friday count, as Andrea gave you an update on enrollment, that really is a huge determining in our budget. So we've made our best estimate of what that'll be. Our property value in our district, which will define our, what we'll receive in equalization aid, as well as our mill rate we should be getting tomorrow. So that's a big day for us. We've estimated five percent. Last year it was sixteen point six. So, you know, we'll see where that turns out. And then the last one is that finalization of our October fifteenth equalization aid. So those are kind of three of the big ones. The only other thing, the staffing reduction estimate, I did update that. We, due to attrition and positions that have changed in the district, we were able to make a reduction of about eight hundred and eight thousand dollars in positions this year. That is summarized in an upcoming document. Estimated employment settlements, now that that's been approved for tonight, I think we're pretty good on those estimates are built into the budget. ESSER III funding, we will, we are budgeted to spend that out all during the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So I think we're pretty good on track. The next sheet, if you want to go down, Tim, is a summary. That second one, I think we've talked about all year, our investment earnings. I mean, that looks like a huge change, but we're just earning a lot more in our investments right now. I think our returns right now are at about five percent. I think in the past, it's been like point zero one percent. So that's a pretty nice investment for the district. Equalization aid, as you, we talked about, we did take a negative seventeen percent this year. A lot of that was because we didn't have those summer schools, the summer school early start students in our count. So we did have a reduction in that, but we budgeted for that. If you go down, I think those were pretty much the big non-capital objects. A lot of that increase was due to the money that's budgeted in ESSER. Last year it was in personal services and there was a more shift to the non-capital objects, curriculum materials this year. Then if you go down, this was the summary of the positions. So like I said, this is the same document that you saw previously. The only addition is if you go down to the bottom, there was an reduction of an IT technician that was not replaced due to a retirement this year. So the total of that is about eight hundred thousand dollars. That was reduced from the operating budget this year. And then we have updated our baseline forecast. So it does look a little bit better than it has in previous years. We did do the three hundred and twenty-five dollars per student increase in the revenue limit all five years. That is what's in the state budget that was approved. Don't know if that'll stay or if that'll be overturned, but that's what we did our, that is currently what is in the law. We kept the special ed categorical aid at thirty-three point three percent. That probably will trend up a little bit, but you know, you just don't know year to year. And then we decreased fifty students. We kind of looked forward for the next three years.
My computer wants to talk to me while you're talking.
Hey.
Sorry about that, Bonnie. I didn't even know I knew how to do that.
Yeah. And then we also estimated property value increase at five percent. And the important thing about that is that will affect the, the equalization aid that the district gets. So, you know, five-year projection, we are looking at about negative five, about four point five million versus the eight million before. Most of that's attributed to that revenue limit increase of three hundred dollars per pupil.
So we still see some reductions, expenditure reductions.
Yep. So we'll keep working on this. Again, you know, tomorrow's our big day for our property value. That'll help us define mill rate for you and give you some more information.
Okay. So the longer shot, we've been watching the budget forecast, which has had lots of variables, including from the spring, you know, before the legislature decided what they're doing. Now it's become a little bit more clear, but we were looking at a deficit budget. Now we're looking at a zero budget.
Correct. Yep. And a lot of, really honestly, a lot of that is due to our interest revenue. I mean, that, that was at eight hundred thousand dollar swing that, you know, good markets right now. So that's good.
Sure. Okay. Go ahead, Heather.
Yeah, just one question of clarification. Someone, we're doing these projections. We're doing them assuming a slight decline in enrollment, but static numbers of people. Is that correct?
At this point, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. The hard thing is, is if we lose fifty students, you know, we don't lose them in one spot. So, yep. But it seems like we're leveling out if you look at the enrollment. I mean, it seems like that bubble's working it through the high school and then will stay a little more.
Okay. This will be our last action meeting until we have the action meeting right before the annual meeting, which is late this year. I think it's September twelfth. So any questions then on the, September eleventh, sorry, September eleventh is a Monday? Any other questions on the projected budget or anything? All right. Seeing none. Thank you, Bonnie.
Yep.
Next up, we have the handbooks and I don't know if we need separate motions, Andrea, but this is something you've been working on a while and we've had a couple work sessions about it.
Yep. I, I guess it would be preferable to have two separate motions for the different handbooks. The important update for the certified handbook is that we also had an opportunity to talk about these changes to our teacher advisory committee last week. So we met last week to go over those changes. So other than that, it's as presented at the work session.
So for the certified staff and the fact that it was presented, teacher advisory, any substantive questions or changes that were requested out of that?
No requested changes. We always have the ongoing dialogue about paid time off in lieu of personal leave and sick leave and all of that, a recurring theme. But also appreciative of the modifications to the emergency leave where now there will be one day per year that they can use for emergency leave purposes out of their sick leave bank. So they were happy to see that modification.
All right. Very good. All right. Is there a motion then to approve the handbook for certified staff for twenty-three, twenty-four school year?
Motion to approve certified employee handbook for twenty-two, twenty-three, or twenty-three, twenty-four school year.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All, yes?
One comment and I emailed Andrea. I think there's just a tweet to the table.
One comment, and I emailed Andrea. I think there's just a tweet to the table of contents, some of the pages that I'm sure will get caught before it's published.
Yeah, it can't be updated until all of the corrections are made, because then everything will shift up once all the deleted stuff is out of there. So.
Okay, so the pages will fix once we vote on this. Any further questions or comments? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Next up is the support staff handbook. Anything there, Andrea?
Nothing changed, nope, from the work session. And pretty similar, trying to get alignment between the certified and support staff handbook whenever we can. And then just no other modifications.
Okay. Is there a motion then to approve?
I make a motion to approve the 2023-24 support staff handbook.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion regarding the support staff handbook or questions that you have of Andrea? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the 23-24 support staff handbook signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Motion is approved. Next up is raider compensation system. Andrea, this is yours as well.
Yes, and we do have several members of the committee here as well, but I'm going to try to be brief and keep, and go through the presentation since it is an agenda item that has been in front of the board several times over the last few years. So with that, we have now modified, thanks to Tracy Habashalene, we've modified the look for the four elements of the proposed raider compensation system, specifically the retain, recruit, recognize, and reach. And definitely trying to highlight each of those elements as we're going through this presentation, this brief presentation. But really wanting to make sure that we're developing that financially sustainable system, structure, that attempts to balance our ability to aggressively recruit staff to the district through a competitive and transparent compensation model, and to retain staff through predictable and comparable growth throughout their career. Just thinking that's really important founding phrase or founding sentence to the overall work over the last two years. In terms of the quick summary of the key components, the salary progression pathways are the steps. Also, the second attachment is the draft structure itself. In that draft structure, you'll see the fact that there are 26 steps as part of that proposal, letters A through Z. For each successful year, typically a staff member would progress a step per the grid after the probationary period. If you're not effective in all six standards, or you receive a significant discipline, you do not progress a step. Again, this is something that we've been talking about with this group. And also, once you achieve 15 years of HSD experience, you continue to earn personal days for every additional five years of service thereafter. In terms of the professional growth pathways, the lanes, we've defined them as BA0, BA12, BA24, MA0, MA15, MA30, and MA45. Earning graduate credits would move people across lanes. We're going to have more conversations regarding that. It is a significant shift in mindset from, of our staff, and I've heard a lot about that over the last month or so. So we'll continue to explore, you know, university partnerships, alternative pathways going forward as we're continuing to work collaboratively with our teachers in this process. The staff were placed on that structure. Sorry to pull up, kind of go back and forth, but the staff were placed on this structure for purposes of costing, and I believe were, they were placed on the basis of their credits earned to date. And so we now have all that system and, or all of that information in our system as well. Quick few notes about the draft structure here, and I put draft all over it as well as wouldn't want there to be a misunderstanding, a proposed tentative raider compensation structure for certified staff. This is a little bit different than what we originally proposed, primarily because over the past month, I've met with at least 50 staff members, based in part on the feedback I received from the board, but then also working collaboratively with our teacher salary structure committee, and heard from so many individuals about some tweaks that they wanted to see within the structure. So modified a little bit, but really the overwhelming consensus of everybody I talked to was the positives associated with the structure. Important to point out that with respect to the structure, it is consistent with the parameters that were given to us to have costings between 1.5 and 2%. Right now, this is estimated to be about 1.6 to 1.8 cents, or eight, 1.8% cost of structure, which again is consistent with that expectation. Key thing for staff is to understand that there's no backwards movement. It's only forward movement, as we've done in prior implementations of the structures. And there are 51 staff that would be off the structure. But we, we're building within our structure, assumed 1% increase for those staff as well. So just in a couple important notes there. And then to the last slide. We went through as part of our TSS committee meeting last Thursday. We also had conversation with our teacher advisory committee. We also had conversation with our whole Hudson Lead team. And individual meetings, I think at least three a day for the last month, varying here and there, but specifically seeking out staff to hear about the strengths that they perceived of the proposed RCS structures, as well as concerns. There was never an attempt on anyone's part to not consider all different elements, and we had extensive conversation over the past two years about what the system does and what it doesn't. And so real quick, the, we focus on each of the four elements that we are our guiding principles, the retain, recruit, recognize, reach, as well as, those elements are also embedded within our strategic vision for admission of the district. On the strengths, predictable, transparent. You see that through multiple of those four Rs. The honor HSD experience through more personal days, increased collaboration amongst colleagues, taking courses and sharing ideas. The concern is less benefit for off-structure staff, without a doubt. That is a concern. Impact of more personal days. That's also something that's come up, I think, at the board meeting last time. An important note, though, with respect to the concern of less benefits for the off-structure staff, I have specifically reached out to people who I know benefited from TSS, as well as specifically will be off-structure. There is not a person that is not in agreement with going to this structure. I have, again, met with many, many people over the past month, and there's a significant recognition of the need to move in this direction, to move away from the old structure, move towards this proposed structure. Real quick, recruit, some strengths, again predictable, transparent, competitive amongst comps, that's a big deal. Comparable system within the area, schools, and easily explained, understood concerns, continued concern regarding leapfrogging when hiring veterans. Some staff want the link to educator effectiveness. That's something that we are understanding when they're coming in as a some people believe that, that they want that as a benefit, but again, still are wanting to move in this direction. The recognition, teacher agency defining your path, that's a significant piece with the lanes. Salary growth for professional growth. Annual stipends for specific duties responsibilities will continue on same amount of money, just distributed differently. I think that's a piece, a piece that's really important through this. Is there enough recognition to encourage participation in leadership activities? That could be a concern. Again, we try to be very transparent through all these conversations of what are any concerns? But again, none of them trumping the desire with a consensus to move forward to this recommendation. Then reaching, again, teacher agency, courses aligning with district initiatives and, and/or teacher interests, that's a big one. And continuous improvement of practice. Embedding that education within the structure, I think, is a significant benefit. And that's what I heard over and over from our TSS committee members, as well as individual teachers. The concerns, credits not required for licensed staff not using, not used to taking credits. I mean, such a shift in mindset. And then time and the cost of the credits. I think those are legitimate concerns. But in lieu of alternatives, I think, again, there's consensus that this is the direction we are wanting to go. It is not perfect. There are flaws in this structure, as there are flaws in every compensation structure. But I believe our teacher voice has been loud and clear, is that this is the direction that we are recommending at this time. And I do want to take a minute to recognize on that last slide before questions, is that there's been a really fantastic group of staff that have worked collaboratively for the last two years, many of whom are here, and I'm very appreciative of their efforts through, for the dialogue, through their conversations, tough conversations. But ultimately, supporting this initiative and supporting this recommendation to the board through their hard work, and I think it's, it's a moment to consider this as a recommended option. Any questions for me?
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
So first off, thanks to the committee for all of your work. Two years is a long time to commit, especially with where we started, but ultimately, it sounds like the result is significantly better than where we got to. Quick question on the folks that were off-structure. If I remember correctly, last time we looked, there were 13 or so. Those individuals are important as well, certainly. What is the path forward for those individuals? Is it only time or?
And so it's a little, when I dove into the analysis more, we have, so 51 people, 49 are MA teachers, two are BA teachers. Of those 49 MA teachers, only 15 are truly off-structure, because the others, if they make growth in terms of credits, will go to the right. And so it's really down to about 15 or so, and they're all above the $92,000. And so what will likely happen is that within our costing, we've assumed a 1% increase. Similarly, if we make structural movement, which with the cost of the structure being 1.5 to 2%, there will be room in a typical settlement to have structural movement. They would benefit from that as well. And so will it be less growth for them in the future? It will. And we have been incredibly transparent about that, and some members here too can speak to it as well. But the, there's always a give and take, right? And the, the give is that then we recognize those years of service with the personal days, which what is exactly what we heard our staff saying that they wanted. Once they reach those element, or those certain moments, the 15, 20, 25, 30, 35 years of service, which is awesome, celebrating them through increased flexibility and additional personal days was what they said they valued. And so hearing that, knowing they'll get a lesser piece of the total pie, but knowing that they're still going to progress going forward with that personal day, I think, was something we spent hours talking about as a committee, and really was the consensus that that's the direction we wanted to recommend.
So it sounds like there's alignment, and they're not left out, which is
Yes.
phenomenal. Thank you.
Okay, Heather?
So, remind me again, the, in the certified staff handbook that we just approved under 8.4 compensation for advancement, there was that greened-out section related to masters. So does that, it wasn't crossed out, but it goes away? Because we're not going to give them 3,000 and give them the bump.
Right, it was highlighted where we'll have to redo the language, right? Like, we would have to modify, we would still have educational reimbursement. So for credits, they would still, I believe, get $50 a credit, up to X amount, and we have like a allotted budget for that. We'd modify all that language depending upon the board action tonight.
Got it. So without kind of the steps and lanes where there was an automatic bump when you got your masters, we built in this $3,000 bump. But now presumably that we have steps and lanes, there would not be an additional bump when you get your masters. It's you would get the bump that comes with the lane bump.
Exactly, and it's 1,500 between the lanes, and then 2,000 once you go from BA24 to masters.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Mr. President?
Yes.
I just wanted to, well, thank you, everybody. As Rob said, this is, was a lot of work, I know. But going to the, the table where there were some of the concerns, and one of them said that the staff want the link to educator effectiveness, I just think, if I just saw that slide, I might be like, educator effectiveness doesn't matter at all, but the, the staff, the teachers need to meet, that be found effective in all six areas. There just isn't that bonus for going above and beyond being
Correct. So educator effectiveness, and in my learning plan, I mean, it's kind of known by both things. It's a state mandated system that will continue. Hudson School District has implemented it in a very robust way, I expect, and we have had many conversations with both the committees, as well as our leadership teams, that that will continue going forward. If teachers are not effective, then they do not get the raises as we laid out in the one section about steps. But that educator effectiveness, again, it's a great tool for growth and for with the indicators and the, the level of understanding in this district of that system compared to other districts, we're positioned well for continued success within that platform, just decoupling it from the pay.
Great, thank you. And I really like seeing for the recruitment that it's going to be comparable to other schools in the area, and it's going to be clearer, and it sounds like it's going to be less stressful for folks, hopefully.
Yes.
Thanks to all involved, of course. This has been the two-year program, you know, and very happy to see this come to, come to an end here, hopefully within some agreement. And I would like to propose a motion to accept a proposed comprehensive system for certified staff.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Bob, second by Heather. Further discussion, questions? Again, Andrea, can you give us the numbers or get fairly close to as far as so this applies to certified staff only, not administrators and not support staff, right?
Correct.
So how many is that certified staff that we have?
I have that right here. Right now, it's 353.
All right, and of those 353, how many are on either probation or improvement plans that would disqualify them from getting?
That are, well, probationary, they're still, they, we have quite a few probationary staff, but it's not that they're not meeting the standards. The ones that are not going to receive a raise due to discipline or, yeah, performance improvement. I believe there's around six to eight people that are in the boat this year that did not get a raise under the bargain agreement. Yeah.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Rob.
And just as a reminder, what year will this take effect? What school year?
This is where it gets a little complicated, because it gets appro, if it gets approved, it gets approved now. We now have about six, eight months to communicate it out to staff. It does, their contract, their first issued contract under this new structure would be for next school year. Because they have already received the settlement for the 23-24 school year and have their new contracts as up, contracts updated consistent with the 23-24 settlement. So it'll be 24-25 that it becomes effective. But that's confusing for staff, because you still have educator effectiveness that's continuing on. And so there was, there, there would be definitely a big communication push to clarify that, to have office hours for our staff, so that there's a, hopefully a deeper understanding of how it impacts each person in this district. And I think we're definitely committed to sharing that information in an effective way.
Thank you. Excellent question, Rob. That was a good question. All right, any further comments? Questions? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. The motion passes. Next up is UU property discussion.
All right, so love the UU property discussion. Basically, what Bonnie and I are kind of seeking from the board is permission to put a sign up on the UU property, listing it, you know, for sale. If any developers want to contact the district about potential development opportunities, they could. But I think essentially, the thought process is if there's going to be any change in the status of that property, we'd rather have a developer spearhead that, that conversation than the district. So we just want to make sure you guys are on board with that. That sign actually got taken down, believe it or not. It was in the fall of 2015, when we went back to trying to figure out if that was going to be a high school site or not. So so we're putting a sign back up to be able to contact the district office. So we don't, we don't have an appraisal on it or anything like that, but it would just give people an opportunity to have the conversation, Bonnie herself, to start down that path if that's what somebody wanted to do.
Mr. President?
Rob.
So I just, from a taxpayer's standpoint, I would love to, you know, understand that we're, whatever direction we go, that financially, we're making wise decisions. And so perhaps, I would suggest, actually having appraisal done on that property.
Oh, yeah.
With, with providing parameters, you know, this way we have at least said bookends on what we think. And similarly, if we're considering selling this property, we should have an appraisal on it too, just from a taxpayer perspective.
Yep, working on the appraisal for this property. And as far as that property goes, really, the conversation, i- it changes drastically depending on what the property is used for. And, and what that can look like. And so at this point, we're just seeing if there's any, any level of interest. We wouldn't move forward with any type of agreement until we had those appraisals done, or until the board felt comfortable, like, hey, this is, we're in a good spot with this. We just kind of wanted to get our shingle out there, so that the public knew that, yes, we are serious about trying to unload it. It's just, we've kind of hit a dead end a little bit from a district perspective, as far as changing the way that property is, I guess, zoned, for lack of a better term. What's that? Yeah, yeah, absolutely. But we are, we are looking, you know, we are listening to the feedback we're getting from people and trying to make adjustments. So.
So given it's a public property, would, and I'm, I'm going to show a bunch of ignorance here, would we have to at some point put out a, a package of some sort, an a a package of some sort and ask for proposals on that property?
Uh, no, actually, I I verified this with our attorney last week uh as it relates to this property. Um, when you sell prop- real property in a school district, uh, the board can entertain an offer on things. It doesn't have to, it's not the same as when we dispose of non-real property like computers or chairs or desks or things like that where we have a kind of a requirement to make sure it's available to everybody in the public. Um, I would think that, you know, we wouldn't, if we get into a negotiation point, that's that's a reason to be in the closed session. It's one of the exemptions for closed sessions. So if the board said, we want to put it up for an auction, you could do that. You could list it with a realtor. You could do any of those things to to sell it. It doesn't require a meeting of the electorate, you know, like it does when you buy real property. Um, similar to what we had to do when we purchased the properties over by the high school. That takes a kind of a special meeting, kind of like the annual meeting, but a special meeting. When you sell property, it doesn't require those same things. Um, so you can enter into agreements um and uh with another entity to purchase.
I'm supportive.
Yep.
All right. Well, do we have a motion to uh put a for-sale sign up? That's all the motion, the extent of it is right now because we got to get the interest first before we can entertain offers.
I'm sorry, I'm losing my voice. I moved that we put a for-sale sign up on the UU property.
Right, we have a motion. Second, any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. There will be a for-sale sign. Nick will, Bonnie will see to it that that gets done then. Uh, last on our action items uh for discussion and or action is Willow River Elementary Chiller Project update.
So um we did, it's around idea, we did reach out to train um to asking for a charter at Willow River. Um, there's
Mike.
Mike.
Forty-five hundred dollar um to hook up the system. Um, so we just kind of gauged a six months per year. It would be about ninety-six thousand dollars per year. Our recommendation is to contact with an engineer to inspect our current system, develop a a replacement recommendation for the school board to consider and then develop bid specifications for the replacement of the chiller. Unfortunately, it was not damaged by, but it could be in the next month. I don't know. We like hail.
Heather, you have a question?
Can you just remind us? I know you mentioned it at a prior meeting, the approximate cost of a new chiller. Was it a quarter million dollars?
I thought it was three hundred and fifty thousand that you were estimating.
Okay.
And that was just a ballpark, I think that was.
Thank you.
Yeah, so given that rental, we're talking minimum of a hundred thousand, that it's doesn't take, you know, much math to figure out that if we're still have Willow River after four years, that that would more than pay for itself anyway, so.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So then one, if if we move forward, you know, with this engineering piece, they'll determine what that scope will be and approximate budgets for for that work. So then we'll have a better idea really what the dollars are that we're talking. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, all right. So is there a motion to approve the re- the administration's recommendation?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Megan, second by Kate. And any further discussion?
So Jamie, to clarify, we just approved the recommendation that we get a bid, basically.
Right.
It's to put together, hire an engineer to put together specs, do the inspection, to put the estimates together so they can go to bid.
Got it, thank you.
Yep.
But we're not approving the actual going to bid.
You're not, you're not buying, you're not buying a chiller yet.
This is just to get us um specs and bids and whatnot. All right, any further questions? Good question, though. All right. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Last up, I'd entertain a motion to go into closed session. We have two bases tonight to be in the closed session, so we need both made in this motion.
Mr. President?
Kate?
The board will entertain a motion to convene in closed session, A pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent G, to confer with legal counsel for advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the board with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. B pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight-five, parent one, parent C, to consider the performance evaluation of an administrative employee.
All right, we have a motion by Kate. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a second by Molly. This requires a roll call vote, so Bowman?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Garza?
Aye.
Logland?
Aye.
Powers?
Aye.
Rozowski? Johnson, aye. The ayes have it. We move into closed session at six fifty-six. Or six fifty-seven.